Here, so I'll start recording. So anybody watching the video, welcome to the first study session. I realize I haven't been called a study session one in the thing just now, but whatever. That's okay. Welcome to the first study session for MTH three twelve. We will be talking about all these things on the screen. I nicely wrote those out for us. And we will be discussing differential equations, which is obviously the main focus of our start here. And the notes will be as always available right there. Okay, so I will begin. If anyone has any questions, of course, unmute or DM me on Discord. See, we're going good on the other server. Okay, everything's good. So let's begin. Okay, so we'll start with just an introduction to differential equations. Okay, that's my, that's my first bit here. I'm gonna pretend essentially that you know what a derivative is. And you, you know what derivatives, you know what an equation is. Yeah, and that's essentially it, right? We can start, we can start from there. And I guess a function, but to know what a derivative is, you need to know what a function is. So first of all, differential equation, a differential equation that I have here is I'll get my definition out from my notes. The actual formal definition is an equation consisting, containing derivatives of one or more dependent variables with respect to one or more independent variables. That's a differential equation. Okay, so when the derivatives are, when there's only one independent variable, right? So all the functions are functions of x, right? Y is a function of x and only x. It's an ordinary differential equation. And if there's multiple independent variables, it's a partial differential equation. So let's take a look at just some examples quickly. I mean, obviously, we know this stuff, but it's good to formalize your understanding. So for example, if I have a differential equation like, well, I should be clear here. So dy dx times x squared plus x y equals two or something like that. This is an equation, right? Because it has an equal sign. It contains a function, okay, y. And I should be clear here, y is a function of x. Okay, y is a function of x. And it also contains the derivative of y with respect to x. And so this is something that is true for this function, whatever function it is. And we'll talk about solutions in a second, but that's the first step there. Before we even talk about solutions, talk about forms. There's different forms you can write a differential equation in. So forms of differential equations, which not dvs. So the first one we have is called general form. General form is, and I guess I have to define order too. So order is, is the, the order of the highest order derivative in the equation. So this is a first order because the highest order derivative is the first derivative. You can have twenty eighth, twentieth order differential equations. And so that means the highest, the highest derivative is the twentieth derivative of our function that we're trying to, trying to relate here. Okay, so the general form is for any nth order, nth order differential equation. And so you can essentially say, well, I can take there's some big function of x, y, y, y prime, y double prime. I should be clear, this is an ordinary differential equation. Ordinary differential equations, dot, 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 y n equals zero. So let me show you what this, what this actually means. Like how, why is that a differential equation? So like, like this last one here, right? So you can see here that we have, you can think of this as a multi-variable function, right? This, this, this whole thing actually, right? So I can take this differential equation. Dy by dx is x squared plus xy minus two equals zero. And I can just call that, well, that, that's just a function, right? Of x, it's an x in there, also a y in there, also a y prime in there, right? So it's just, it's just a function of x, y, and y prime. And so that is what that is. And so then we can see how, you know, if I were to write that differential equation like that, then setting that equal to zero, right? Would be exactly what we have here. If that's defined as that differential equation. So this is just the, the general form. Any differential equation at all can be written like this. So when I, when I say any at all, any ordinary differential equation can be written. Every separable, separable one, every exact one can be written like this. And so it's important to know the forms because sometimes they just pop up randomly in the solution process. Okay, so a normal form is the next one, normal form. Normal form is for nth order, ordinary differential equations. It's actually very similar to the last one. So nth order, ordinary differential equations. And it's essentially the same thing as this. It's just you take out your function of your, your highest derivative, right? And just put it to the other side. So it's going to be y, the nth derivative of y is equal to some other function of x, y, y prime, dot, 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 y and minus one derivative. Right, it's the exact same thing as this, that you can write a differential equation in every differential equation in that form that has ordinary derivatives. And if you just take out the highest derivative, you can write it like this. So again, like this example here, I, I can take it dy by dx, x squared, what did I say? Plus xy equals two. And I could choose to write this as dy by dx equals two minus xy over x squared. And that would be this form, right? We have the highest derivative on the left side or whatever, on one side. And the other one is a function of, well, x and y and potentially other derivatives as well, but not the highest derivative, right? The highest derivative is on this. That's useful for separable. So you see how just random forms can pop up. Okay, and now we can look at the last one. And this, this one confused me for a long time. So it's called differential form. Differential. And this is how we've solved exact differential equations. So it's m of xy dx plus n of xy dy equals zero. And I want to just be clear, this is only true for first order ordinary differential equations. This is a specific form only for first order ordinary differential. Now, to see how this relates to just like a regular, like this isn't not how you write an equation, right? This is, this doesn't make any sense in terms of any calculus we've ever done, right? Like, how do you multiply a function by dx, right? What does that mean? How do you multiply a, multiply a function by dy, right? We just haven't done any of this. So the reason is, is because you're kind of glossing over some, some very theoretical math when you're, when you're doing this. But essentially, for the purpose of this course, we can assume that dy by dx is a fraction. Okay, well, dx by dx equals y prime is a fraction. And we can say that this implies that dy equals y prime dx. Okay, and then any other combination, you can just treat it as a fraction. What, what's more close to the truth is that this is true and this is separately true, not because it's a fraction. They're just separately are true facts, that dy by dx is equal to y prime and dy is equal to y prime dx. Those are separately true facts, but they look certainly like you're multiplying both sides by dx. They really look like that, right? So you can just call it that. And that's why they're written as a fraction, because you can usually treat it like that unless you're trying to really dig deep into the theory. But we can just, you know, we can just, for now, we can just assume, you know, dy equals y prime dx. So these two equations are what led us. It's what lets us like actually be able to solve differential equations by doing this. It's super important in solving differential equations, doing this. And so we're going to use this all the time. So really, from now on, you can treat them like fractions. So this is the differentials that I was talking about, differentials. These are our differentials. Okay, the differential dy, differential dx and their relations to each other there. Okay, so then let's see what kind of differential equation this is. Let's try to solve for dy by dx, I guess, right? Because it's kind of hard to see. So you have m of xy dx plus n of xy dy equals zero. So now let's try to solve for dy by dx, literally the fraction, because we know that's equal to y prime. So great. So it's just going to be n xy dy equals negative mxy dx. And then we can just see that dy by dx is equal to negative mxy over n of xy. Right, so if you're ever given a differential equation, like we're given lots of differential equations in this form, like, I don't know, two xy dy plus, I don't know, three x squared sine y dy equals zero, right? You, what this is really trying to say, in maybe a form that is more understandable, right? Is, is this, it's trying to say that dy by dx equals, so this is m, this is n. So it's going to be negative two xy over three x squared sine y, right? And so I, I think this is a more digestible thing, right? That's a differential equation. Okay, so you know, we, we kind of understand, right? There's some function where its derivative is equal to this relation to the function. But this is kind of more nonsense. This is just a form that is used only in particular cases, with differential form. Again, used for exact differential. Okay, so I've been, I haven't mentioned solutions yet, so that's, that's essentially the next bit. And I'm just going to keep going unless anyone has any questions or anything else they want me to cover or any other important things. So if I'm going too fast or anything like that, just, just let me know. Happy to, anything, whatever. So let's talk about solutions now. Solutions are a little bit more complicated than you might realize. And just because we have to be very exact with what we're saying. So any function phi, and that's, that's what my, the textbook that I'm reading uses. So I think it works, it works pretty well. Defined on some interval I possessing n derivatives that are continuous on that interval, which when substituted into differential equation becomes an identity, is a solution to the differential equation. So what I mean by this is, you know, we can, we can talk about a solution to an equation. Solution to an equation, right? In the same way, like what's the solution to this equation? Well, it's the number, the number, you know, I don't know, x, x naught, or right? It does not have to be x, the number, I don't know, I'll call it, fuck, call it phi. The number phi defines, so a number is always defined on itself. So this, this doesn't account for numbers, right? And it doesn't have to be derivative or anything like that, which when substituted into the equation, the equation becomes an identity, is called a solution to the equation. And so x equals two is a solution, because when I substitute that solution in, right? That's an identity, that's true. Five equals five, yes, that is true. So we're asking the exact same thing for differential equations. When I have a differential equation, right? Like this one up here that I have on the top of my screen, I'm asking what function, okay? Or, well, okay, I'm, I'm asking for all the functions phi, right? Which when you substitute it into y, you get the correct, you get an equation that's true, right? So like, I can, I can just guess, right? I can say like, well, y equals x squared, right? Let's just try that. Or, yeah, I mean, I could call it phi equals x squared, but I'll call it y. All right, let's, let's just see if that's true. So, you know, we take the derivative on the left side, it's going to be two x equals, you know, two, negative two x, x squared over three x squared sine x squared, right? I just replace y with, with x squared, then I replace dy by dx with dy by dx, with derivative. And so now we have to ask, is this true? No, this is not true, obviously, for any x except zero. No, zero is not even true, so it's not true for any x. Well, sorry, it might be true for some x, but whatever, that's not, that's not important. So we can see it's not true for almost every x, if not all. And so it's not a solution, right? This random function is not a solution. So we're doing the exact same thing as if we're solving like simple equations, like quadratics or linear equations, right? It's just that now our thing that we're solving for is not a number, it's a function, right? Particularly a function of our independent variable. So, yeah, okay. There's that. Let's see, and so another important thing is that the function that we solve for has to be defined on some interval. In fact, you, you can't just say that a function is a solution to a differential equation without saying it's interval. Okay, so a function has a, a differential equation has a solution on some interval in particular, that you have to specify that. And I'll get it to you. Question? No, okay, thought someone said, okay. So good to see what's next, because we talked about solutions. Now let's talk about implicit and explicit solution. Now I'm realizing there's a typo on my thing here, right? So an explicit solution to to a differential equation is a function in the form y of x equals, well, sorry, I guess, y equals f of x, right? That is an explicit solution to the differential equation. Like, you can actually say that the y value, the, the function is equal to some actual function of x, right? And only x, and only x here, I'm sorry, not x and y, right? And only x, right? So that's an explicit solution. Right, and maybe let's just verify a solution quickly. Let's just show you, you know, it's worth a, a second to just verify a solution, an explicit solution. I gotta find it. I didn't open the textbook, sorry. By the way, I use this textbook, highly recommend, very highly. I'm telling everybody to, to read it because it's very good, very legible. Great questions, great examples. Everything makes sense, lots and lots and lots of content, even stuff for our ELI classes, there's Laplace transforms, everything like that. There's lots of good stuff, so highly recommend this one. If you would like to talk about where to find it, talk to me, just message me. But, yeah, so in this textbook, it just starts out with a little bit of introduction, you know, verifying some solution to a differential equation. Let me just, let me just try here, verification of a solution. Let's just do that quickly and see if, see if it's true, right? Let me see if there's any more interesting. Yeah, let's just, let's just do one of these examples. So if we have the differential equation dy by dx equals x root y, right? We say that this is a solution to it. Y is one over sixteen x to the four on negative infinity to infinity. And let's just try to understand why you have to say the, why, first of all, how is that a solution? And why do you have to say the interval? So, well, we can check if it's a solution by just, remember, it's like taking it very literally, right? You know, is it true that the derivative of y with respect to x is equal to x times square root of x? All right, let's, let's, let's take a look. So the derivative of y with respect to x, right? Would be, well, power rule, so it's going to be four over sixteen x cubed equals x root one over sixteen x to the four, right? So four over sixteen is one over four x cubed, right? Is equal to x, right? Over the square root of sixteen. And then x to the four in a square root, right? We one over four x cubed equals x times x squared over four. And so we see that this is true. Not only is it true for, right, for like some particular x value, it's true for all x between negative infinity and infinity. It's true for every x value. There are differential equations, differential equations where that, you know, this equality here is only true for some solutions, right? For some x values, right? And so then you have to specify what interval it is a solution on. But this is true regardless of what x value you choose, for any x value between negative infinity and infinity, right? So that's why this is a solution on that interval, right? We could also have, we could, we could, you know, just make the interval smaller. It's a solution on five to six, that's true, right? That's limiting it a little bit, quite a bit. But, yeah, that's the idea. Let's do one more of this just to, just to make sure we're super comfortable with verifying solutions. So I have y double prime minus two y prime plus y equals zero. I'm going to tell you the solution, one of the solutions is x e to the x. In fact, we're able to solve this one by the end of this lesson, but that's fine. So let's verify the solution is the second derivative with respect to x. Okay, well, so second derivative is going to take me one second, it's going to be e to the x plus xe to the x. That's fine, second derivative is going to be e to the x plus e to the x plus xe to the x. So two of that. And let's just verify, is this true? So two e to the x plus xe to the x minus two e to the x plus xe to the x, right? Plus x, yeah, plus x e to the x equals zero. Well, let's take a look, right? So it's going to be two e to the x plus xe to the x minus two e to the x plus xe to the x, sorry. Minus two xe to the x plus xe to the x equals zero. And you can see we get cancellation, zero equals zero. This is true for all x in R, right? Or equivalently x in real numbers. So this is true on negative infinity to infinity. Might be covered, but, yeah. Okay, so explicit solutions, that's, that's it. I want to move on, you know, obviously, we know what an explicit solution is. And we've been doing this course for a day, you know, a week already, so. But I want to mention implicit solutions, because the reason I went through all that is because I want to talk about what an implicit solution is. Okay, which is the more interesting and more complicated. So an implicit solution, let me find my definition right here. A, so an implicit solution is a relation, g of x, y equals zero. If there exists some function that satisfies the relation and the differential equation. Okay, so let's, let's try to understand here for a second. If we have a differential equation or sorry, dy by dx equals negative x over y, right? This is a differential equation. It has a derivative and, and it's independent and dependent variables in here, right? But the solution to this differential equation, or at least one of the solutions to the differential equation, is not written explicitly. Okay, and so, for example, this is a solution to that differential equation. But that is not y as a function of x. In fact, I can't write y as a function of x here, because that's a circle and that's not a function. So what is it then? It's an implicit solution. Call it an implicit solution. Oh, I just got a text. I have to pick up something from the door, there's a delivery, sorry. Sorry about that, okay. I will, I will hold your horses, I will wow you in a moment after I just get the delivery. Okay, sorry, I don't, honestly, I don't know why I was called to do that. I, I thought it was like, I'm the only one home, so I have to answer it because it was like the post office guy was there. He wasn't, he just left the package. I don't know why, I don't know why I was called to do that. But anyway, so we will continue. This is an implicit solution, because if you implicitly differentiate it, okay, so you, you can't just take the, you know, I can't just tell you what y prime is by doing normal differentiation, right? If you implicitly differentiate it, you have to kind of remember back to Calc one, right? You will get a solution. So let's take a look here, right? If I implicitly differentiate it, dy by dx. Okay, so the derivative of x squared with respect to x is two x. The derivative of y squared with respect to x, where y is a function of x, okay? Importantly, y is a function of x. So it's going to be two, so plus two y. And now chain rule, you need the derivative of the inside equals zero, right? Solving for y prime, right? We get, it's going to be, well, move that over, it's going to be two y, y prime equals two, negative two x, right? Y prime equals negative two x over two y, y prime equals negative x over y. And that's exactly our differential equation. So even though we can't write that as a function, we just say there exists some function y that satisfies this relation and the differential equation. And if you can solve for y, try and do it, and then you have an explicit solution. But if you can't, that's okay, this still counts. It's just called an implicit solution, because if you implicitly differentiate it, you get the solution, you get the differential. Okay, so that is essentially my, my introductory stuff, okay? That's, I think that's all I have for introductory stuff. Yeah, because then it just goes on to differential equation. So I thought all this was important to actually say out loud, because I think a lot of it is, is obvious. I mean, some of it's obvious, like the forms, or you just have to know the forms, but like, oh, like, I don't know, like, I don't know what to call obvious, nothing's really, I guess, not obvious, but like, it's all like simple stuff that we definitely know at this point. But it's good to have it actually written out in words in front of you, to know for certain that you know these facts are true, right? Like, like again, like, why are we allowed to do, treat it like a fraction, right? Or things like the different forms, like what, what does that actually mean? How can that be a different, how can that even be an equation that we can understand, right? Well, it's because the same, actually the same thing as a first order differential equation in that form, right? So all these things, I think, were just important to note and important to actually say out loud before the course begins. And then from here, we have a better, you know, framework to actually start learning about how to solve these differential equations. Okay, so any questions before I move on? Let me know. Otherwise, I will move on to my next topic. So I covered solutions, implicit versus explicit differentials, okay? So my next order of business is classifications. I gotta, see, I am going to post the PDF, if you say, in case someone, yeah, Tariq is watching, yes, I am going to post the PDF today in tutor announcements. No problem. So classification is what we care about next. So classi- a, I hope I spelled that right? Classification, yes, there's not two Fs, no, there's not two Fs. There is two S's, yes, okay. So, of course, because class. So before we begin studying differential equations, you know, I can just throw a bunch of differential equations at you, but you have to sort of have some sort of framework that you can understand how are differential equations similar to each other or different from each other? And to apply different techniques, because otherwise, you're just going to be coming up with a new technique every time you see a new differential equation. And so that, that isn't really a good way to go about it. Can be much more efficient if you just class them together. So our first classification that I already mentioned is order, okay? So that's the highest derivative, right? Highest derivative, right? So different ordered differential equations have different solving techniques, okay? Then, so those, that separates you into like each order has a different entire technique, right? But then from there, from each of those branches, right? From, you know, first order, second order, dot, 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 you know, nth order, you have more branches, okay? So you're either linear or nonlinear, okay? So just, I'll just do that here, you know, you branch out from there, either linear or nonlinear. Now, what does linear mean? Linear means that essentially, I mean, let me find the actual definition before I start saying random stuff. Let's, let's, let's find the actual formal definition of linear. That's exact, I don't know, linear is lower. There we go. An nth order linear differential equation, which is also called LDE, is a differential equation in, in this form, okay? So essentially, you have some functions of x and only x multiplying the derivatives of y. And then you're adding all of those things together. So for example, if I had something like two x y double prime plus y prime plus three sine x y equals, I don't know, cosine x, this is linear, okay? And the reason for that is because you can think of it like we're, you know, we're just multiplying our derivatives. This has nothing to do with y, that has nothing to do with y. Y's are very well behaved in this, right? There's just a one there, right? The y's are very well behaved. All we have for the y's are in a nice order, right? Only one y per term, and the, the order of each term is, is lowering, right? We're going from second order to first order to zeroth order to, you know, not, no y in there at all, right? So it's sort of like, you can think of it like, it's just all well behaved, okay? And so we like that, okay? And so it's also called linear, because you have to remember what a linear combination is. We'll mention that a little bit later, right? Combination, but a linear combination of, of something, so of, you know, a bunch of functions, y, well, I'll start with y, y prime, dot, 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 y, nth derivative, right? A linear combination of all those things is something times the first one plus something times the second one plus something times the third one plus dot, 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 plus something times the nth one. Now those somethings don't have to be the same, right? They don't, they don't have to be, it's just something. In fact, they don't even have to be numbers, they can be functions, right? And so we learned in linear algebra, linear combinations over the real numbers, meaning these have to be real numbers. But, but now they don't actually have to be real numbers, right? So we're doing linear combinations of, of, of functions being scaled by other functions. Okay, so that's why it's called linear, that's the definition of linearity, but what's definition of linear combination? So that's a linear differential equation. And so that's an important classification, because linear differential equations are more well behaved, so they can be solved much easier than nonlinear ones. So nonlinear ones would be, maybe I had, you know, even if I had two y double prime terms, that still isn't nonlinear, right? Because I can Because I can just factor out the Y double prime, right? And then turn it into that. So it's not that I have multiple terms with, with Y double priming. It's that I have something happening that these functions are not just functions of X. If these functions are functions of X and Y, the things that are scaling are Y double prime, Y prime, Y, and so on. Or if there's a Y over here, right, and I can't rearrange it to this form, we have an issue. It's nonlinear. Right? So it's gonna be harder to solve. I'm realizing this should be a function of X there and then, yeah, that's, that's the only typo on this one. If you see any typos in my notes, please just let me know. I'm happy to, not, not gonna take insults. I would like to see them and correct them. But yeah, so we have that. A G of X is just what we call the, the function at the end after the equals. So, uh, yeah, there's our linearity. There's a classification of linearity. Now, if we just move on from there. So hopefully you can identify a linear equation, a nonlinear equation. Sorry, that should have brackets around it. I'm gonna do that, but I guess I won't. So then there's one final, well, there's not one final, but there's another one that we like to talk about. And linear can either be homogeneous or non-homogenous. Genus, whatever, doesn't matter. It's homogenous. I can't leave it like that. I'll just say H. H or not H. Don't want to spell the whole word. So what that essentially means is a homogeneous equation is an equation that equals zero. Right, that's it. So if, if, if G of X equals zero. Right, then it's homogeneous. And it's a little bit simpler to solve those kinds of equations and the non-homogenous ones, you can use the solution from the homogeneous one to, to solve the non. They're very related. Okay. Uh, importantly, also, in a linear equation, the dependent variable, Y, 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 all the derivatives of Y and Y. Are all in the first order, or first, not first order, but first degree. So it's, it's not like we have Y double prime to the fifth power. That would make it nonlinear at that point. Right? Because then you're kind of like, you're mixing in functions here and then you're doing all the kinds of other stuff. So these functions have to be functions of Y and the derivatives of Y and Y have to all be of the first order. Okay. So, um, there's some theorems and technicalities in here. But they're not really important. So I think let's move on to solving some separable differential equations. I'd probably just do one because we've done separable so many times. I mean, if you'd like to see me do more, just tell me. And I will do more. But, uh, let's just, let's just start like. Okay, this is. Hard one. Un, unnecessarily hard one. Let's see if I can find a. Anyone has a good example? Yeah, I'm just gonna go from the book here. Um, so here, this is a separable differential equation. Yeah, and it gets a good one, actually. So example, uh, solve the following differential equation. 1 plus X DY minus Y DX equals 0. So, um, this is not in a form we like, right? It's just not, not very nice. So let's, um, put it into a form that's more familiar to us. Right? So, which is Y prime equals something happening there, right? That would be a lot nicer if it was like that. So that's gonna be 1 plus X DY equals Y DX. Or in other words, D Y by DX equals Y times 1 over X. One, 1 over 1 plus X. That's it. Okay, this is nicer. Essentially, what we have here is a function in the form, or a differential equation in the form, D Y by DX equals F of X, G of Y. Right? Two different functions. G of Y is Y, F of X is 1 over 1 plus X. And if you want to solve this, we want to solve for Y here. We can rearrange this in a, in a specific kind of way. And so it's not super complicated to derive this. You can just say, well, multiply both sides by DX. Okay, so you get, you get this here. Move the, move the G of Y over, so it's 1 over G of Y DY equals F of X DX. And remember, we're always allowed to do the same thing to both sides of the equation, so I'm gonna integrate both sides of the equation. And then I can do this. This is something I can compute and that's something I can compute. It's just a normal derivative. And so we can figure, I mean, normal integral. And so we can figure out how to do that. So let's do that with this example, right? I'm going to multiply both sides by DX. It's gonna be D Y equals Y, 1 over 1 plus X, plus X DX. And then move the Y over, it's gonna be 1 over Y DY equals 1 over 1 plus X DX. And now I'm allowed to just integrate both sides. Left side is lawn absolute value Y. The right side is lawn absolute value 1 plus X. Okay. 1 plus X plus C. Now. Okay, so let's try to solve for Y. If I, I mean, this is, this is an implicit solution, right? I can, I could end here and say if they only wanted implicit solutions, then they only wanted implicit solutions. We're good. Right? But let's try to see if I can get a better example going here, right? So if I put E to the power of both sides, right? Then it would be E to the lawn Y cancels, right? There's gonna be absolute value Y on this side. Now this side's a little bit more complicated. E to the lawn absolute value 1 plus, uh, X plus C. I can separate that, C is in the exponent, right? So I can separate that into E to the C. Because if you're multiplying things with the same base, their exponents add. Right? And so I can say absolute value of Y equals E to the lawn absolute value 1 plus X. Okay, now I can, now I can cancel that out. So it's absolute value 1 plus X E to the C. And now our absolute value, uh, to get rid of the absolute value, well, you just, the inverse of the absolute value function is plus or minus X. So you just do that to both sides. So you're gonna get Y equals plus or minus 1 plus X E to the C. Okay, both sides, absolute value. And, and notably here, I should be clear. So, so let me, let me just be totally clear. I'm, I'm, I'm applying the inverse function of absolute value of X, which is 1 plus or minus X. To both sides here. E to the C is always positive, so it's fine. That didn't affect anything. But yeah, we have that here. And then sometimes you're gonna see this written as, uh, plus or minus K 1 plus X. And you might be wondering like, why, what, where did E to the C go, right? Well, you know, C is an arbitrary constant. Important thing to remember, C is not only a random number, okay? But it's also no particular number. Spell that, that'd be good. Particular number, right? It's not like it's some number we have to solve for and we just don't know it yet. No, no, it's, it's just a random number, right? Any number. So E to the C is also just some number. Doesn't matter, right? It'll be positive now, but again, it, it, the, the, the number itself doesn't matter. So we just, just call E to the CK, right? E to C is K. Okay, and, and now you have a, just a regular constant. You solve for that. Okay, and so you see we have a, we have a, um, uh. A parameter in this equation, right? K is in there. And so if I were to graph this, let me go into Desmos quickly and, and just try to graph this. We have, we just go, go here, right? We have Y equals, um, so plus or minus, so I'll, I'll do plus first. So, uh, K times 1 plus X. And I'll add a slider per K. And then I'll say another function is negative K. Right? 1 plus X, right? Any of these functions, right? Any of these functions are solutions to the differential equation, any of them, right? Um, and so it's just good to visualize that we have a whole bunch of solutions here, right? Because I don't have to do both at the same time, but anyways, that's not the point. Uh, in fact, actually, I can just fully remove this. And so any of these functions probably is a better way. Any, any linear equation, essentially any linear equation that goes through the point, uh, negative 1, 0, negative 1, 0. Is a solution. But then what if I said, for example, right? That I want, that I want us to have, you know, a particular point in here, right? Let's say I, I, I very much want that this differential equation goes through the point, I don't know, 0, 2. Right? I should say that. There's, now there's only one differential, there's only one solution. That applies to this, right? So what that is, it's an initial value, right? I told you that Y of 0 is 2. So at any point, that K value has to take on a particular value. The K is not a parameter anymore. When I apply, when I subject the differential, the, the solution to a. Particular initial value. So Y of 0 equals 2. Okay, I'm gonna say, well, 2 equals plus or minus K 1 plus X. And in fact, if I let K be negative, then I don't even need the plus or minus, to be totally honest, right? Like, that's what I did here, right? I let K be negative. So then it, it accounts for it. It can be plus 7 or whatever, or it can also be minus 7. Um, so we can just solve for K now. And so it's going to be, I mean, I get, I, I'm wondering if, if, even if I do that, then there's two, let me just check the solution here. 0. 0, yeah, okay. So there, there is actually two solutions to this. So we can just leave it as plus or minus. So, uh, what was it? X was, uh, uh, 0, right? So 2 equals plus or minus K times 1, so 2 equals plus or minus K. So this value, K equals 2, right? And let's see, K equals negative 2? So that's not also a solution. Right? Strange. I guess it goes through the negative point. Okay, so we really can actually. Yeah, because if K is negative, then minus that would just give you positive 2 again. So you really actually.
This is because you're using one function. You weren't using negative K 1 plus X.
I guess, yeah, yeah, okay. So then if I use the negative. Yeah, okay. So if I use the other function, the other function that, that was given there, so it would be minus K. 1 plus X, right? And if I set K to negative 2, right? You set K to negative 2, as it is right now, it'll go through. Yeah, okay. So one of the solutions for K applies to the positive function and one applies to the negative function. And that's just, that's just part of this plus or minus that's here. Yeah, good point. Okay, so there's that. There's our separable one. Any questions? Not, I will just move on. We've done separable so many times, so. Unless you have any like practice problems for me to do? Have a vaguely interesting one? Okay, that's. Okay. That's fine. Okay, so terminology here. Uh, so I was just saying that's fine because like, like, there's no more questions. This is not a solution, right? It is a solution family. Right? That's a family of functions because it has a parameter, right? Any function that can be written in this form, plus or minus K times 1 plus X. Is a solution to the differential equation that we started with. It is a solution family, right? Any particular choice of K gets you a particular solution. That is a, well, I guess, plus or minus 2. So, um. I'll just say, well, couldn't I say K equals absolute value of, yeah, anyways. But Y equals plus or minus 2, 1 plus X is a particular solution because there's a particular value for K there. But this is, this is better than that. This is a solution family. Any function in this form will be a solution to the differential equation. So initial value gives you a particular solution. But without the initial value, you will get a, you will get a. Family. In fact, that's not entirely true. So if, if you have an initial value, uh, you will not necessarily get a unique solution. There might still be a family of functions that satisfy even that initial value. Um, and you can determine that based on some theorem, but we'll talk about, it's not an important theorem. Never gonna show up on a quiz, but. We, we can mention it, I guess. Really not important. Okay, so let's move on now to exact differential equations. And this took me a while to like, understand, actually, you know, in like a real way, instead of just like a. Sure, like I could compute it for a while. Hey, like I, I learned it and I could compute it and it was fine. But actually understanding what I was doing is, is way different. At, so let's move on to that. So if I have an exact differential equation, you know, I'm not gonna spend too much time, that's not like the point of today. The point of today is to kind of prepare, do this week's stuff. Um, so I'll just do one, but I just want to kind of explain the, uh. Logic behind everything we do here, right? So let's say we have a differential equation in this form. And let's say we want it in this form. You know, we have some wild idea that we want it in this form, right? Why would we ever want it in this form? Well, because we, you know, have been reading up on our math. And we've discovered this fancy theorem that showed up randomly and seems to be interesting. So let's take a look at what that wicked theorem is. Uh, I can't find it, so. Uh, there you go, there it is. We were. Going through math textbooks and we found this theorem. Wait. Yeah. That if we have some multi-variable function. Then it is a solution, it equal to C. It is an implicit solution to the differential equation, which is its own X partial derivative DX. Plus its own Y partial derivative DY equals 0. It's a solution to that. So you're like, okay, interesting. Well, I mean, like, fine, I don't know. That, that's meaningless information to me. But then you start thinking, well, what if, what if this and this are the partial derivatives? Of some function? And oh, this theorem tells me that that function U. Oh, that function would be a solution to the whole differential equation. So what if I said, right, what if I said, okay, well, now let's try to figure out what U is? Right? DU by DX, DU by DY is equal to that. So DU by, UPS, DU by DX is equal to 2XY. And DY, DY by DX. DX is equal to X squared minus 1. And so you can, this is a, it's actually a system of differential equations you have here. Sorry, that's not DY, so it's DU. A system of differential equations, um, which you want to solve. But it's, it's, uh, you can just solve it by substitution and it's not so hard. But there is a check you have to do first to check if this is gonna work. And I'm gonna be totally honest with you, I don't really know why you have to check it or why it does that. But I can show you how. Uh, and hopefully, you know, hopefully that's enough for you guys. I, I did a little bit of reading on it, but I, I never wrapped my head around it and then I just moved on to new stuff. But I, I, you know, remembering now that I didn't do that, I really would like to, uh, check that. I mean, there's a, there is a proof right here. Uh, and if anyone's interested, maybe after the, after the live session, I don't want to waste time doing it. It's not really waste, but I don't want to spend time doing it right now. Um, but there is a proof of, of why you have to check if something is exact or not. Um, and how that tells us that it's, something's exact, so we will, we can go through that after if anyone's interested. But for now, let's just say that you are only able to do this if D, the derivative of that, right? D by DY of that, 2XY. Is equal to the derivative of that with respect to X. So X, uh, derivative by DX of that. Okay, and let's see if that's true. Right? Is, is that actually true? Right, derivative with respect to Y as well as 2X. And here, that's 2X. Yep, it is true for all X. So we can do this. We can actually say this. That, you know, the derivative of U, that implicit, the theorem, the theorem is telling us that that function exists. Um, and so the derivative of that function with respect to X is equal to that and the derivative of that function with respect to Y. Sorry, that should be a Y there. With respect to Y. Yeah. Did I do that right? Yeah, because that got, that was correct. That was Y. Yeah, okay. Respect to Y is equal to that. It's telling us that function exists, right? And it is the solution to the differential equation, so we actually want to solve it. It's not just a random thing. I could say right now, you know, I want a random function that is, you know, has a partial derivative of five times this. I could do that, but it would be meaningless. This theorem tells us that there's actually meaning to saying, well, what if there's a function whose first partial derivative is that and second partial derivative is that? Okay, so let's, let's do it, right? So to do it, I'm gonna integrate with respect to X on both sides to cancel the DXs. Integrate with respect to X. So we have the integral of DU. Integral of DU is equal to U. Now we have the integral of 2XY DX. And now you're integrating a multi-variable function, which is something you've never done before. And they're just throwing it at you, um, because they. Didn't plan it properly, I guess. I don't know. That's, that's my hot take. But, uh, Y is a constant, so just remember that. Y is a constant when you're integrating with respect to X, so you can integrate that out. You have X DX. And so you have U equals 2Y. Integral of X is 1 over X, uh, 1 over 2X squared, so the 2 is gonna cancel, you have some X squared. Okay, but plus C. This is where them not teaching that this is multi-variable integration actually has a little hiccup. Because it's not plus C when you're doing multi-variable integration. We'll do this when we talk about actual multi-variable integration. But it's actually a whole function that is our, our constant here. Because remember, when I, when I say this, I'm saying what function of X and Y both, right? What function of X and Y satisfies it? That when I take the X derivative, I. That when I take the x derivative, I get this. Right? That's what I was trying to ask, right? What function gives, whose x derivative is that? When you take the derivative with respect to x of a function of y and only y, that would go to zero. So in fact, it acts the same as a constant because the function of y is a constant, but we have this, this is our u value. This is the function. This is the function that is an implicit solution to our differential equation. But we want to figure out what y is, h of y is. So we use this other equation. Integrate with respect to y. Dy is canceled. Integral of du is equal to u. Integral of x squared minus one with respect to y. Interesting. That's going to be u equals, uh, well, x squared minus one's a constant with respect to y. So u equals, um, x squared. Ah, that is not what I meant to do. I got ahead of myself, didn't I? Okay. Back up here, back up here, back up a little bit. Sorry about that. Not, I didn't really make a mistake. I just was going down a, a path that, uh, had no, uh, we had no business going down that path. Okay. Um, we want to solve for h of y. If I were to go ahead and do that, I would have gotten just another h of y. Isn't fun. I know what du by dy is. And I can set that equal to x squared minus. What's du by dy? We'll just differentiate this with respect to y. That's just going to be x squared plus h prime of y. Derivative of that with respect to y. And that's equal to x squared minus one. Oh. If x squared plus h of prime of y is equal to x squared minus one, then h prime of y must be equal to minus one. Right? Integrate both sides to respect to y. And we get h of y equals negative y plus c. And so finally, our implicit solution to the differential equation, u of xy is equal to y x squared plus, oh, minus y plus c. And actually I can make this an explicit solution. Because look, I can just set it equal to zero, any constant. Equal to zero. Um, right? So the, the, it's an implicit solution, but I can, I can just solve. I can forget about that. And then I can say y x squared minus one plus c equals zero. Right? Y equals negative c over x squared minus. And negative c is just c, but whatever, I'll call it negative c. And now we have an explicit solution. I turned this implicit solution to an explicit to the differential equation. So hopefully that reasoning made sense. Again, I'm not going to spend much time on it because this is kind of last week's stuff, but um, hopefully that reasoning made sense and maybe you got a little bit more insight into how it works. Um, definitely like to go through that proof I mentioned, but not at this. Okay. Um, so I have so far covered, uh, solutions, general implicit explicit differentials, classifications, separable, exact differential equations, initial value problems, covered all this stuff. So let's talk a little bit about, um, this week's stuff. Okay. Which is studying, how do you solve second order differential equations? Okay. So yes, an hour of, of warmup for this. I'm sorry about that. That would be faster, but. Um, so we will talk now about solving second order. Oh, if I could spell second, that'd be good. Order differential equations. Oh my god. Great. It does. So let me go back to the thing here, just so I can see everything. Sorry. One second here. Okay. Okay. So don't need that open, do I? Something second order differential equation. Now this is the part that's not in my notes. I don't have this and I honestly, I'm going to be kind of doing this off the top of my head. So pardon me if I do any mistakes or anything like that. Okay. So first of all, let's remember what a homogeneous differential equation is, a homogeneous linear differential equation. A homogeneous linear differential equation is any equation where you have the, you know, y nth derivative and then y nth minus one derivative, dot, dot, dot. Adding these all together, it's y double prime plus y prime plus y equals zero. And each of those things are just being scaled by some function of x. Okay. And a different function is a one, a two, da, 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 da. I'll, you know, I, I guess you'd call this actually an n and an n minus one. This would be a two. A one of x, a not of x, and then we have zero at the end. So that's a homogeneous, homogeneous linear differential equation. Okay. So we can solve second order ones. Okay. Now we, I know I'm skipping first order because, um, first order is from MTH two forty and, uh, seems to not be an issue in this course that we don't need to know how to solve that. So you know, I, I want to get through content that is, is important first, and then we can definitely talk about that after. So I am, I am consciously. Whoa, can I spell consciously? On, I'm, I'm not going to start fumbling over it right now. So consciously, um, uh, skipping. First order linear differential equation. Okay. Um, we're going right to second order. For again, because it's last year content and it is also seemingly not important for this course. At least, at, at least at this point. Um, so to solve any second order linear differential equation. So first of all, a second order one would be when n equals two here, right? N equals two, you're going to get a two of x, y double prime plus, uh, a one of x, y prime plus a not of x, y equals zero, right? We're given this. Uh, let me find some practice questions. Before I even said this, you know, it's going to be easier to explain when I have some practice questions. So that is in chapter three and you can go down, unique solution, value problem. Uh, that's fine. That's fine. Superposition. We will talk about that, of course. Bronskin, we will talk about all this. I just want to find some examples, actually. Okay. Well, they're only higher order. Okay. Then I'll just get, I'll just get the practice, practice work that that was actually assigned to us. I've already done it, but. I got it. So yeah, we'll start talking about, so second order homogeneous linear differential equation, non-homogeneous. So we're not going to talk about, I mean, I guess we'll talk about non-homogeneous ones too, actually. So we're going to start talking about second order homogeneous linear differential equations. Yeah, that's fine. Let's start doing the five point one exercises, um, and see how it goes from there. So I'm going to have to grudgingly go back to the old, the actual fine textbook for this course, uh, which is chapter, so I'm going to chapter five point one. Let's take a look at some practice problems and that will help kind of guide our way through solving some of this. One. Uh, yeah. Number one is. Okay. Number one is actually useful. It seems, it seems boring and seems, um, boring, uh, for lack of a better word. But, uh, it, it is, it is illustrating something very important and about homogeneous different linear differential equation. So, uh, first of all, verify that these two things are solutions to that differential equation. Okay. Let's, let's do that. So I'm going to verify that y one is a solution. Um, I'll just do y one. I won't do y two. I mean, I think you'll believe me that y two is a solution. So y one is equal to e to the two x, y two is equal to two e to the two x, y three is equal to two, uh, four e to the two x, right? So substituting that into this equation, we get four e to the two x minus seven times two e to the two x. Right? Two x plus 10e to the two x. Right? Equals zero. And yes, in fact, that all cancels. Check if you don't believe me. Um, and we get zero equals zero. Exact same thing is going to happen with y two. So yes, it is, it is a solution. And not only is it a solution, it's a solution on negative infinity to infinity, because that is true for all x values, because there's no x value in it.
Wait.
Yeah.
I have a question. Uh, how'd you, wait, uh, how'd, where'd you get four e to the two x from?
Four e to the two x? Oh yeah. I'm just going to, sorry. Yeah. That I notated that way wrong. Uh, prime, double prime. I don't know why I called it y two and y three.
Oh, okay.
Does that make more sense?
Yeah. So what you do is, oh, so in the place where it's y double prime, you put the double, uh, derivative and then the, oh, alright, okay.
And then just verified, is the equi- equation actually true?
Yeah. Oh, thank you.
No problem. Okay. So now we have to ask ourselves, uh, a different one. First of all, uh, this would have been true if there was a c one here. That, that would have actually been probably a better example. So it's actually any linear multiple. Any, any scaled version of this. So you can multiply this by any constant c, right? And it would actually still be, still be a solution. That probably again, would have been more interesting to do, but you can kind of just imagine that you, you know, you, you just have a c here, a c here, a c here. Um, and so they'd have a c here and a c here and a c here, and they would also just all cancel. So I don't want that to look like forty. So now if I take this solution, y equals the, the two solutions and add them together. E to the five x, is that now a solution? The answer is going to be yes. Um, and so that is the superposition principle is that a second order linear differential equation will have two families of solutions. These are two families, right? C times e to the two x and c times e to the five x. They're different families because the, the multiple is on the outside there. It's not like the, it's not like two and five are, are, are the multiple there. So there are two entirely different families of solutions, but you can get, uh, the general solution. You call that the general solution, which kind of combines both families, right? Into one, um, and that is still a solution. Uh, notably, if I wanted to say, for example, just have that, then I would just say c two equals zero, right? C two is any random constant. And c one equals one. And so then we would have that solution. Same logic for the other one too. So I just want to verify that that's also a solution. So I'm going to have to take the derivative. Right? It's going to be two c one e to the two x plus five c two e to the five x. Y double prime is going to be four c one e to the two x plus twenty five c two e to the five x. And I'm going to substitute that into our equation to verify that it's true. Going to be four c one e to the two x plus twenty five c two e to the five x. That's our y double prime. Minus seven times two c one e to the two x plus five c two e to the five x. Uh, that's our negative seven y prime and then plus 10 y plus 10 times c one e to the two x plus c two e to the five x uh, equals zero. And now we do it all, right? We just, you know, deal with this. So plus twenty five x, uh, why is there an x there? That's supposed to be a c. Why did I say c? Why is it x? I don't know why I said x. Okay. Whatever. Did I say x anywhere else? Okay. Uh, e to the five x. Sorry, there's supposed to be a c two there. So c two e to the five. Yeah.
Are you, are you doing the same thing that you just did in the previous question?
Yeah, same thing. Yeah.
Okay.
But just with the gen- with the general form, with this sort of general form, just making sure that that is actually a solution.
Okay. So wait, hold up. Wait, where's the seven come from? Is that from the question?
Yeah. If you look at the differential equation, it's, there's a minus seven right there.
Oh, so in the y prime spot, you're going to put in the y prime and the y situation, put what? Or thank you.
So you see how I put, I put that there. Um, okay. So that's going to be minus fourteen c one e to the two x minus seven times five, seven times five is thirty five. So minus thirty five c two e to the five x plus ten c one e to the two x plus ten c two e to the five x equals zero. And as you can imagine, something cancels. Does it cancel? Yeah. Minus thirty five e to the five. So that's going to be, uh, that, that and that cancel. And then that, that, that cancel. So we get zero equals zero. So yes, in fact, that is a solution for all x values to our differential equation. In fact, we call it the general solution. General solution. Why? Because it is a linear combination of the two families of solutions to the linear differential equation. Okay. And so that makes it the general solution. Again, you can think of that, these particular solutions as just some choice of c one and c two. And you choose c one and c two to be some. Okay. Notice that we have two constants here. So for a second order linear differential equation, in fact, a second order differential equation, if you want initial value, you need to give two initial values, right? Two equations for the initial value. So like y of zero equals something, y prime of zero equals something. It doesn't have to be of zero. So y of something equals something, y prime of something equals. Okay. So that is essentially that whole example. The rest of it, I don't think. Solve the initial value prob- oh, solve the, okay. So let's do that actually. So since I just mentioned it, let's do it. So to solve the initial value problem uh, of that differential equation with some initial value. So y of zero equals negative one. I y of zero equals negative one, y prime of zero equals what? Equals one. Right? I just, I just do it very literally, right? So, um, I take my y equation, right? So of zero equals negative one. So it's going to be negative one equals c one e to the two times zero. Right? Plus c two e to the five times zero. Right? That's, that's that equation. And now this equation. So y prime was one of zero. So two c one e to the two times zero. Two c one e to the two times zero. Plus, and it's going to be five c two e to the five times zero. That just comes from, oops, that just comes from there. Okay. So now we can just solve for c one and c two. So it's going to be negative one equals c one plus c two. One equals two c one plus five c two. Right? You can solve this by however method you want to solve this. Um, okay. I, I guess I'll just solve it by a matrix. I don't know. One, one, negative one, uh, two, five, one. Alright. It's a system of linear equations. So I'll just do it. One, one, negative one. Uh, two times this minus this. So it's going to be zero, two times this. This minus two times this. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. That's how, that's the way I say it. This minus two times this, three, this minus two times this. Uh, so one minus two times negative one. So one plus two times one, one plus two is three. Don't want to make any mistake here. That's why I'm doing it so literally. Divide row three, row two by one, by three. And then row one minus row two, one, zero, negative one minus one is negative two. Zero, one, one. So I get c one equals negative two, c two equals one. And so the solution to the initial value problem is our function. D one e to the two x plus c two e to the five x, right? Our general solution, but with these particular choices of c one, c two. So y equals negative two e to the two x plus e to the five x. There's our initial value problem solved. Okay. So there's that. Um, but I think, is this this week's stuff? I can't remember if that was this week's stuff or last week's stuff. This might still be last week's stuff. I think it is. Um, so I want to get to this week's stuff so that, you know, people have, uh, well, I mean, everybody has labs on this stuff next week, so we're kind of more prepared for that. Um, so I'd say we move on. I think we even move on to five point one. But of, you know, of course I could spend a lot of time digging deep. I'd love to dig deep into all the theory behind this, but that has to be for another day. I want to, it's a little bit more useful. Um, so, uh, why am I showing my notes? Those are not useful anymore. So let's start talking about, uh, solving. We're going to start talking about solving homogeneous and non-homogeneous, uh, second order differential equations. That, that is what we are talking about here now. Right? So how do you actually, so like this example here, we were given that solution, right? That, that's not, not totally fair. So the ones that we were taught how to solve this week are called constant coefficient. Um, linear differential equations, right? Constant coefficient means that the, the a functions, a n, dot, 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 a one, or a zero, actually. They're all equal to some k, right? They're to some constant. K is a real number. K is. K is a real number. Um, they're all equal to some constant. It's not like we have like sine, well, it doesn't have to be sine, like x squared, y double prime plus x, y minus three sine x, y, or put that there. Y equals one, something like that, right? Um, like, this is a linear differential equation, but it's not constant coefficient. Constant coefficient means that those coefficients have to just be constants, numbers, whatever. Right? So let's just, just jump into it. Let's just try to get, do a practice question, and I think I'll just explain as I'm doing the practice question, what I'm doing. Um, but, well, I guess we can start like this, right? So actually, you know what? I can start with a little bit of exposition before we do that. So we're solving an equation in this form. A y double prime plus B y prime plus C y equals zero. First of all, sorry, we're starting with homogeneous ones. I should have mentioned that. We're starting with homogeneous ones, so it's equal to zero then. Okay? So we're gonna start with solving a homogeneous one, and we're gonna show how you can solve non-homogeneous ones. So uh, this is how the professor did it. I know it might seem like a weird way to go, but this is honestly the best way to, to instruct it. Um, is, is let's just say, I know my solution is going to be e to the m x. Let's just say I know that. How? I don't know how I know that. Let's just say I'm gonna take a guess here. And if I can do this and actually solve for m, so let me just say that. This is our guess. But it's a useful guess. I mean, you can make a guess whenever you want. If you can solve for m in terms of A, B, and C, then you have actually solved. If you can do that, then you've actually found an interesting theorem. You've essentially discovered some math if you can do that, right? Um, obviously, this has been done before, so we're not gonna be any kind of crazy additions, but yeah. So uh, let's check, let's try to substitute that into the solution, see what has to be true. So m e to the m x, y double prime equals m squared e to the m x. Um, and now let's substitute that in. So A m squared e to the m x, e to the m x, not e to the m to the x plus B m e to the m x, okay, plus C e to the m x equals zero. Okay? That's fine. Let's factor out e to the m x. A m squared plus B m plus C equals zero. Now we can use the zero property, right? Which is saying that if one of these, if, if we're multiplying two things together and they equal zero, the only way that could happen is if one of these things were equal to zero. E to the m x will never be zero. So we're essentially looking for when is this equation equal to zero? And that's just solving a quadratic. Right? And there we go. We've just solved for m in terms of A, B, and C. It's exactly what we wanted to do. Right? And so we've actually discovered something here, that that is the solution. And how do you choose m? Well, it's, that's how you choose m. Right? So honestly, if you just want to memorize that, you know, uh, our solutions, the solution to this differential equation, B y prime plus C y equals zero, are e to the, now, e to the m x, y equals that. Um, and I guess I should call this, just to be totally clear. There's two solutions, right? There's m one and m two. Y two equals e to the m two of x, right? Where m one or two is just negative b plus or minus the square root of b squared minus four a c all over two. And if you just memorize this, then you're essentially good.
I have another question.
Yeah.
So um, when uh, when Kim taught this for the first time, I had, uh, he said to make sure that, that the term that had C y went into the constant term in the quadratic, right?
Uh, yeah, the C is the constant term. The C is the constant. Yeah.
Right? This, and he did the same thing when it came to just a normal constant in a differential equation. So let's say it was a plus d at the end.
Yeah, there's a plus d here.
Yeah, what would, uh, how would that change the solution?
It would be non-homogeneous. Right? You'd have a non-homogeneous second order linear differential equation, and that we will talk about in this live stream, but not yet.
Uh, okay.
Does that make sense as an answer, though? Does that, is that a satisfying answer?
Yeah, that makes sense. That makes sense.
Yes, question?
Oh, thank you. So basically, you know how you wrote m one comma two, right?
Yeah.
So does that mean there's two solutions or one?
Well, remember, a quadratic, the quadratic formula gives you two answers, because you have a plus or a minus there, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, m one is with the plus and m two is with the minus.
Okay, I get you. Alright, thank you.
But instead of writing two formulas, I write m one comma, or m one comma two.
Thank you.
No problem. Um, question? Is there another question there? No? I heard the link. Discord. Sounds like we're good. Um, okay. So homogeneous, make that a zero. Um, let's, that's it. That's, that is, that is it. Okay? Um, there is some complication if um, m one equals m two or if m one and m two are um, complex. Uh, and, but it works the same. It's just there's complication. There's added complication. Um, so let's deal with that. Let's see how we can deal with that. So I'll do an example where they're not equal. I'll do an example where they're equal, and I'll do an example where they are complex. Does that sound good? Sounds great. Okay. Um, let's take a look here. Uh, I, I'm gonna find an example here for us. There is an example, so that looks like it's, yeah, that looks like a constant coefficient one. Yeah, perfect. Okay, exactly, exactly what I wanted. Looks like this textbook had the same idea as me. I like this textbook. I think, I think, think like this author. Not actually, but uh, but anyways. So uh, we have now, uh, let's solve this differential equation. Two y double prime minus five y prime minus three y equals zero. First of all, is this what we want? Is this a second order linear differential equation with constant coefficient? Yes, it is. Hopefully you can see why. Okay, if you don't, ask me. Yeah, that's, that's a second order linear differential equation with constant coefficients. Um, so let's see how we solve it. That would be our next, next criteria. So uh, pretty much, we can do, you can do the whole process, you know, make a guess, da, 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 make a guess, make a guess, whatever. But uh, a, a better way of doing it is, is to just jump to, you can either jump right to the quadratic formula, or just jump to that. Jump to this, right? We don't have to do this whole process every time. Just switch it to a quadratic. So essentially, just switch it to two m squared minus five m minus three equals zero. Right? So essentially, I'm skipping all those steps and landing there. And then now you can go to the quadratic formula, if you want. I'm gonna do the quadratic formula here, because I don't want a complex factor. Um, so I'm gonna say, okay, well, so m one two is equal to negative b plus or minus the square root of b squared. I'm just gonna start doing it. B squared minus four a c all over two a. So our two solutions is five plus or minus the square root of twenty-five minus plus eight times three is twenty-four. So all over four, we get m one two is equal to five plus or minus the square root of, of, oh. Oh, twenty-five plus, oh, that's forty, that's forty-nine. Yes, that's forty-nine. Okay, for a second, I was like, uh, seven over four. So m one equals five plus seven over four. M two is five minus seven over four. So five plus seven is twelve. I got that right? Yes. So m one equals three. M two is five minus seven is negative two, negative two over four is negative half. And so we can just jump right to a solution, right? I, I made a guess. I said our first thing is gonna be e to the m x. So our first one is e to the three x. And our second solution is e to the negative one-half x. And those are our two solutions to the differential equation. In fact, actually, there's supposed to be a C in front there. I'm forgetting. So C one there, C two. Um, but yeah, it's the same thing. And there we have.
Um, yeah. So how come in the previous example, you included the e to the m x part in the actual question, but then this one you only did like uh, my, like, two m squared minus five m, when the previous one you did like two e to the m x?
Essentially, this was to just prove that we have a method to solve it.
Okay.
But this was, this wasn't even really an example. It was more just like a derivation of the formula. It's how you go from the differential equation to your solution.
Oh, to the final equation. Alright.
Right? So I'm essentially saying that you don't have to do all this. You can just skip to right here. Right? Start there and then go there and then solve.
Alright, thank you. Wait, can you scroll up a little bit?
Yeah.
Was m some, essentially lambda, or that was different, like in Kim's lecture? I forgot.
Lambda, yes, yes, it was lambda.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I get it. Alright, thank you.
No problem. Um, so there's our solution. And in fact, we can get the general solution, because we do y one equals C one e to the three x um, plus C two e to the negative one-half. Great. There we go. That is our um, general form. So I not see y one. The, the general solution is just y equals that. Okay, I will do another example. This time it will not. I mean, it'll work, but it will be an added complication. So y double prime minus ten y prime plus twenty-five y. Once again, ask yourself, is this a linear differential, linear second order differential equation with constant coefficients? Yes, it is. So we can just jump right to m squared minus ten m plus twenty-five equals zero. Very importantly here, if this wasn't there, right? Then the twenty-five, sorry, twenty-five would be there, but the, the, this wouldn't be there, right? A very easy mistake to make is to say, if, like, imagine that wasn't there, to say, okay, this is m squared plus twenty-five m. Because you see the y there and you think, oh, I'm gonna replace the y with an m. But no, that's not the case. The y prime is replaced with an m. The y is replaced with just a one. So there we go. We have that. Now we can solve this. Uh, that's just gonna be m minus, uh, yeah, m minus five squared equals zero. So m one equals uh, five and m two also equals five. Okay? So our issue with this is, well, at, at first, it might not be apparent, right? Because we can just say, okay, well, one, one solution is that, and the other solution is that. Sure, they're the same, but you know, that, that's fine. And if I make the general form, this is C one e to the five x plus C two e to the five x. Okay, but this isn't quite the general. Because the general form is supposed to combine two families of solutions. The first family being e to the five x and the other one being something else. But look, this is also part of the same family. And I could just factor out e to the five, well, I'll factor out e to the five x to the, to the right. So C one plus C two e to the five x. And now C one plus C two is just some arbitrary constant, whatever, C three. And now you can see that our general form only has one solution family in it. That's not good. That's, second order differential equations have two solution families. And so since they have two solution families, uh, this cannot be the general form, and so we have not found the general form. We found one solution family, but not the other. So you gotta find the other, right? So to find the other one, you use um, Abel's theorem. I'm pointing, that's what it's called. Uh, I don't have it written down. It's really annoying when I don't have it written down. I really, next time, I really will have everything typed out properly before we do this, and I will have this over the weekend done. Um, but it's called, uh, I guess it's called reduction of order.
Wait, is this recorded?
This is recorded, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's good.
Where is it posted?
Uh, it's on my YouTube channel. That's where I post everything. And then the link is posted in tutor announcements on the server.
Alright, thank you.
Nope. And the PDF will be there too. Um, so um, I'd love to go through the derivation of this, but I don't know it, and so I can't. But if you would like for us to go through it next time, let me know. Um, I'll do it myself, by myself. But we have a theorem that tells us that if we know one solution of a linear second order differential equation, right? If we know this one, right? Yes, we, we know it. Okay, if we know it, then the other one is equal to this. D x. And, and since we're talking about constant coefficients, I'll just call it that. That's an integral over, no, the over isn't there. Y one squared. Okay, it's just the formula to find the other. How is this true is a whole other conversation, but we're just gonna use the fact that it's true. So if we know one family of solutions, we can find the other family of solutions by doing this, by just plugging it into here. So let's do it. B is our B value here. B is the B value, like, the second number uh, from, from our original equation. You value that. Um, so, and this is true, so this is the process you're gonna have to go through every, all the time if you get the same two solutions there. You need to find the other family. So uh, y two equals, well, it was e, uh, C one e to the, what was it? To the five x. Integral e to the, oh, sorry. I did that wrong. Eat, wow, okay. Type that slightly wrong. Negative integral B dx, there. So e to the negative integral B dx, B is your second coefficient. Inside of an integral, right? With the respect to x, everything with respect to x. E to the negative integral, negative ten dx over C one e to the five x squared dx. Great. Sometimes you can't solve this. Sometimes this integral is not solvable, whatever, it's fine. Um, but it will be for our purposes. So we can do that. This is going to be e to the integral, ten times the integral of dx over C one squared e to the five x, uh, ten x. D x. Hopefully you see why that is there, right? We can get a we can get a, uh, thing going here. What's it called? A thing going here. We can get a uh, five, e to the five x squared is e to the ten x. I do want to find this example, just to make sure that I'm doing everything properly. Is okay, we should get, are we gonna get what I'm expecting to get? I hope so. E, I mean, y squared is equal to C one e to the five x integral of e to the ten x over, C one can go out, so it's the one squared can, can leave, right? That's fine. E to the ten x dx, yeah. Y two equals, let's just say, C one over C one squared is, is C two. It's the five x integral of one dx. Y two equals C two e to the five x times x, or usually you put the x in here, C two x e to the five x. Okay, and there we go. That is our other solution. Okay, so our general solution is C one e to the five x plus C two x e to the five x. In fact, for any situation like this with constant coefficients, that didn't have to be a five there. That five there didn't do anything, right? That five essentially comes from, from this ten here. Um, and so we can just say, right, that if you have a if you have this situation, A y double prime plus B y prime plus C y equals zero. And you solve that m one equals m two, then your general solution is C one e to the m, I'll just call it m x plus C two x e to the m x. That will be true. In general. If, if you solve that the two solutions, m one, m two are both the same number, then that is gonna be your general solution. How do you find the second term through this whole process? How do you find the second term through this whole process? But you don't have to do the whole process if you don't want. You can just use this fact. And then so that was for that case, and in the case that they're different, right, well, in the case that they're different, then, so if you do this. Well, in the case that they're different, they're up there, and I'll I'll summarize everything. Okay, what if they are complex, right, what if they are complex solutions? So let's see what happens then. Y double prime plus four y prime plus seven y equals zero. Yeah, I'm gonna try to solve this linear second order, linear second order. Constant coefficient differential equation, ordinary differential, bunch of categories. Okay, so we have m squared plus four m plus seven equals zero. Can I factor this in my head? Uh no, because it have complex solutions, never mind, that's the whole point, so I will try to solve this. M equals negative b, which is negative four, plus or minus the square root. Of b squared minus four a c all over two a. M is equal to negative two plus or minus the square root of sixteen uh b squared minus four a c, sorry. Um four times seven is twenty eight. So m equals negative two plus or minus, that's sorry, I don't know why I keep saying plus there. Sixteen minus twenty eight is, I don't know, twelve, negative twelve, yeah, obviously not positive twelve, negative twelve, right? No, what are we talking about? Sixteen minus twenty eight? Yes, I have some music calculator. Yeah, it is negative. How did I get? How do you get root three? I made a mistake. Negative b plus or minus the square root of b squared minus four a c all over two a. B squared. Okay, let's just see where we go from here. M equals, uh that's over two. Oh, two times. Four times three, yes, okay, never mind, yep. All this four times three, that's that is the thing that I was forgetting, okay, so we get um. Root twelve over two i, negative two plus or minus root twelve over two i, so solutions there. Um m equals negative two plus or minus, now you can actually simplify this, root twelve is three times four. Over two i, m equals negative two plus or minus root four times root three over two i. With four and two cancel, so m equals negative two plus or minus root three i. And so now. Our solutions are y one, y, our general solution is is c one e. The negative two plus root three i x plus c two. E to the negative two minus root three i x. That's the general solution, that's totally fine. Just that, that's not the form that you usually want. I'm not gonna derive the whole form because I'm gonna be honest with you, I don't understand some steps of the derivation, I'm still not, I still haven't cracked it. Um so I'm just gonna tell you how you can write this. And I'm just gonna tell you that you can write it as y equals. Um c e to the negative two cosine root three x. Plus sine. Root three x. Why can you write rewrite that as that? Fantastic question, totally love the question. Um I don't know the answer to that. There is the derivation in the textbook I suggested, I don't fully understand it. So um we can go through it if you'd like, I mean, at the end, once we get through all the content.
Wait, where did the c one and c two go?
You're right. Great question. C one's supposed to be there, c two's there. That's where they went. So now let's just look at the general, you know, what what happens, there's three cases that could happen. If you were given some linear differential equation with constant coefficients that looks like this. There's three things that could happen. Either m one does not equal m two and m one and m two are both real. In that case, your solutions, your actual general solution is c one e to the m. One x plus c two e to the m, m two x. That's your first case. You just get actually two distinct solutions that are real. Fantastic. Then you have another case that could happen, right, I guess actually, I should, I'm not gonna rewrite that every time, so there's there's your case one. Your case two is, oh, what if m one equals m two? Then your solution is y equals c one e to the mx, I'm just gonna call it m. Plus c two x e to the mx. Why? That was our whole second example that we went through. Use Abel's theorem and all that to to figure out the other solution. Okay, and then case three is if m one and m two are complex. Then we have a whole situation here, but that means that m one. M m two or m one and two will be in the form alpha plus or minus beta i. Right, like up here, it was negative two plus or minus root three i, so alpha is negative two, beta is root three in this example. Then your solution, uh the reason you're gonna get that as a solution is because it's a quadratic, if you're solving a quadratic, the roots are symmetrical, so. Um and so your solution will be what your full general solution will be e to the alpha. C one cosine beta x plus c two cos uh sine. Si- sine beta x. That is your solution. So these are the three cases that could happen when you're solving a homogeneous second order. Linear differential equation with constant coefficient, there's three cases that.
Wait, shouldn't it be alpha x instead of just alpha?
And the. Should it be? Am I am I forgetting the formula?
No, I'm asking you this way.
Yeah, 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 no, I think you're right, yeah, I am forgetting the, I am forgetting the formula, yeah, that was just a mistake on. On my end, it's also because I didn't derive how we go from here to here, so there should have been an x there, it should have been next to, yeah. So now that is, those are the three cases now. Hopefully, nobody wrote that down and then left. Um yeah, that that is a, that there's supposed to be an x. Again, that that mistake just came from the fact that I didn't derive, but I just went right to the. And I don't have it written down in my notes. Anyways, um so there we go, that is solving homogeneous ones. Now, non-homogeneous. How do we do that? We can totally do it. Um but it takes a little bit of extra trickery. The first thing to note is, so now we're trying to solve this kind of equation, right? A y double prime plus b y prime plus c y equals zero. We're solving this equation here. We want, sorry, not, da da da, g of x, that's not homogeneous now. Okay, that is, that's what we're trying to solve, that is our new goal, solve with the g of x there, right, not, and and g of x notably is not equal to zero. If it was equal to zero, then we could just do one of those three cases up there. How we do this? Is we break the solution into y c plus y p. Okay? What's y c? Y c is the solution to this this differential equation. Okay, y p is something we gotta figure. Okay, so first of all, I can break this up into two problems. Find the solution to the homogeneous system, which we know how to do in those three cases, plus something else. Why is that true? That's actually something kind of deep um in linear algebra, we did this in in linear algebra, it's chap, end of the fifth chapter. Um and it was a confusing one, so if you wanna discuss it with me, I can, we can have a discussion, but. You're gonna just have to accept this from me this current moment, of course. Talk to me about it later, but yeah. Um so, let's do an example, I'm gonna do this with an example. Because we gotta figure out what y p is still, right, that's 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 the. Problem is, we gotta figure out what that is. So um wow. See this quickly, there it is, okay, so we're gonna use the table method. I wanna note here that uh watching the lecture. Kim's lecture and uh. He didn't really mention, I mean, he mentioned the table after he did a bunch of examples. Which was a really, really weird way of doing that, but uh that's fine. So here, I'm going to write the thing and I'm gonna right away show you the table, cause I think that's how you're supposed to do it. Uh minus two y equals two x squared minus three x plus six, okay? So first things first, to find the solution to this differential equation, we need to find y c, y complement. Right, so y c is the solution to the differential equation that um, oh, is it complex solution? No, it's not. So it's, we gotta find the solutions to um the homogeneous system, so solve. This differential equation. Let's do that, it's gonna be m squared plus four m minus two equals zero. Gonna be two numbers that add to four and multiply to two, one times two, no, two times two. Are they weird solutions? Yeah, they are weird solutions there. Fine, so m equals negative four plus or plus or minus, you know what? Okay, you know, never mind, I was gonna say, you know, let's just solve the solution, but no, negative four plus or minus the square root of b squared minus. Four a c all over two a, so m equals negative two plus or minus the square root. Of sixteen plus eight over two. Uh m equals negative two plus or minus the square root of uh twenty four. Over two, which I'll just tell you and simplify into the square root of. Hey, you can push enter calculator if you want or whatever. Um so there's our two solutions, they are real and uh. And distinct, so we have case number one, so our solution is. Y equals c one e to the negative two plus root six. X plus c two e to the negative two plus root minus root six. X, okay, that is our particular solution to the homogeneous system. Uh sorry, that is our, that is our um complementary solution to the homogeneous system. Complementary, complementary to that. Now we gotta figure out our particular solution, okay, we gotta find just some solution to the differential equation, which will get us our general. Okay, the reason, the logic behind the table method is to say, okay, we gotta do a bunch of stuff with. With um solutions here, right, with with the derivatives, right, there's a whole bunch of derivative action going on. Um all that derivative action is gonna end up being a quadratic. So I think it's a pretty reasonable guess that our actual function might be a quadratic. Right, some quadratic, I I we can't guess what exact quadratic it is, but it might be some quadrant. Right, so the table method kind of gives us a way to to think about a guess we could make. And then we could find the constants there, so like, for example, if our g value is a quadratic. So this is saying is a quadratic, now I really don't like this table, I'm gonna rewrite this table myself. Um really, check out this weekend, I'm gonna add a lot of notices. Um so if our constant functions are quadratic, then it's a reasonable guess to say that our. Our solution might be ax squared plus bx plus c, and now we just gotta figure out what is a, b and c, and that will be our y p. Okay, so I'm just gonna take, I'm gonna rewrite our differential equation down here. It's y double prime plus four y prime minus two y equals two x squared. Uh two x squared minus three x plus six, and I'm just gonna take a guess. That y equals ax squared plus bx plus c. Okay, what's y prime? Two a x plus b, y double prime, two a. Substitute that in, two a plus four times two a x plus b. Um minus two times ax squared plus bx plus c. Equals two x squared minus three x plus six. Simplify, two a plus eight a x plus four b. Minus two a x squared minus two b x minus two c. Equals two x squared minus three x plus six. Factor all the constant terms, x squared terms and. X terms together, so it's gonna be negative a x squared, okay, plus eight. A, well, first I'm just gonna order them so you can see it, minus two b x. Plus two a plus four b minus two c equals two x squared minus three x plus six. Right, so then I'm just gonna say two a x squared plus eight a minus two b x. Plus two a plus four b minus two c. Equals two x squared minus three x plus six. So if. Some colors here to help, right? If these quadratics are equal, right, that means that that must be equal to that. That must be equal to that. And that must be equal to that. In other words, negative two a equals two, eight a minus two b equals negative three. Right, two a plus four b minus two c equals six. And then we just have a system of, a system of linear equations to solve, so uh a equals negative one. Knock that off already, um I could just solve it. I wanna solve it as a matrix, I'm gonna be honest with you, so this, it's just, I don't like substitution, so. Just gonna do it like this, negative two is zero. Two, four, negative two, six, you can solve it by whatever method you want, um I'm just gonna plug it into a. Calculator. Or just to not waste time. So it is a uh three by four, so it's negative two, zero, zero, two. Um eight, negative two, zero, negative three, two, four, negative two, six. Our solutions are uh a. Um a equals negative one, like I said, b equals negative five over two, c equals negative nine. And so there you go, that's our y p, right, we made a guess that our y our our y p was ax squared plus bx. Plus c, and then we could actually solve for a, b and c, so yeah, that that is actually a solution. Negative x squared minus five over two x minus nine, that that's actually a solution. And so the general form of our solution to that differential equation. Is the complementary solution, which was c one e to the something, negative two minus uh negative two plus root six. X plus c two e to the negative two minus root six. X plus our particular solution plus or minus x squared minus five over two x minus nine. And that is the general solution to that. Ah, what happened? Non-homogeneous linear second order positive coefficient differential equation. Okay, so how does everybody feel? And so you do the same process, you just have to look at the form here, right? Match this form, which form doesn't match, is it a constant, then it might be a, is it a linear term, then it might be a linear term. Is it a quadratic, then it might be a quadratic, cubic, maybe a cubic, uh keep going up, here is it's sine, then it might be that, okay, so. I I really hate this table because why, why would they, I don't, I just don't know why they would have a four here. Why would you ever, just make it general, just put a b there, right, and then that would be b and b, like it it does work, that does actually work. Like it doesn't, it doesn't have to be sine four x, it could be sine k x, and so you would use a cos k x plus b sine k x. So when I put type into my notes, I'll do it fully general, so I don't see why. Um and then all these things, other things work too, so like notice here, right, like we can factor, we could fact like. Like if you were just given that, like look at eight there, if you were given it as nine. Nine x e to the five x minus two e to the five x, you might be looking at this saying like, oh, that doesn't match any form, I don't see that, that's not a form here. But if you factor e to the five x out. Or you see, oh, it does actually match that form, so we can use that, the linear term and then e. Oh, you see, oh, it does actually match that form. So we can use that, the linear term and then e to the k x. Right? And if that was a quadratic term, it would be quadratic term each, it's right here, quadratic term e to the k x. Quadratic term and then a sign, that works. Quadratic term and then just do your sign, but it's a quadratic term. Instead of a and b being linear terms, they're quadratics. And yeah, um, it is eight thirty. So that is essentially the end of the uh. Livestream. We can, I'm here to talk for a little bit more if you have any any extra questions or anything like that. Oh, I didn't mean to do that, but you know what? But yeah, otherwise, that is the end of the livestream for today. So I hope you guys enjoyed. I hope you find, have found it helpful that we went through a bunch of stuff. I tried my best to go through. I know we didn't take a break today. We will take breaks next time. Just wanted to like get two weeks of content in one lecture, not lecture. Lesson, so session, I should say. So, yeah, that was our time for today, but hopefully you guys enjoyed. Um, again, I'm here for any more questions if you got any. Otherwise, have a good night, guys.